Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of the San Francisco Community Roundtable on February 10, 2022. I call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. We are meeting via Zoom. Joining us today are staff of the Roundtable, Doreen Stockdale, interim Roundtable Coordinator, Angela Montez, Roundtable Administrative Secretary, Jeanette Lujon, Executive Secretary, Sematological Planning Department, Jean Reindell, HMMH Consultant. We also have Lisa Alasada, Deputy Director, Planning and Building Department, County of Sematelo, Linda Wallen, Senior Legislative Aides Supervisor Pine, Birkenong, San Francisco International Airport Noise Abatement Manager, Brian Perkins, Office of Congresswoman Jackie Spear. At this point, Ms. Montez will advise the public how they may participate during public comments. Ms. Montez?
Thank you, Chairman Hindi. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comments, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to speak on that item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your microphone and inform you that you may begin speaking. You will have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montez. We now move on to roll call. Ms. Stockdale, please conduct the roll call. Doreen?
Doreen's muted.
Okay, there we go. Sorry. Gotcha. City and County of San Francisco Board of Supervisors?
I'm having a bit of problem with my microphone.
No response? City and County of San Francisco Mayor's Office? No response? City and County of San Francisco Airport Commission?
Ivar Satoro.
Thank you. Sematelo County Board of Supervisors?
Dave Pine?
Thank you. B. C. Airports and News Commission? No response. Town of Atherton? No response. City of Belmont?
Tom McKeown?
Thank you. City of Brisbane?
Terry O'Connell.
Thank you. City of Burlingame?
Ricardo Ortiz.
Thank you. Town of Colma?
John Goodwin.
Thank you. City of Daly City?
Emily De Giovanni.
Thank you. City of Foster City?
I'm Hindi.
City of Hafnum Bay?
Harvey Wadak.
Thank you. Hillsborough?
Al Royce.
Thank you. City of Menlo Park?
Cecilia Taylor.
Thank you. City of Millbrae?
Anne Schneider?
Thank you. City of Francisco?
Here, Mike O'Neill.
Thank you. Town of Portola Valley?
Jeff Alfs.
Thank you.
Sorry, good evening, Jeff G.
Thank you. City of San Bruno?
Tom Hamilton here.
Thank you. City of San Carlos? No response. City of San Mateo? No response. City of South San Francisco? No response. Town of Woodside?
Oh, Carbo?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Ms. Stockdale.
You have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. Thank you so much. We will now move on to public comments for items not on the agenda. Staff will read any written comments and allow members of the public to speak. Ms. Montez?
Thank you, Chairman. I do see one hand raised for members of the public. And I would like to note that we did not receive any written comments for items not on the agenda. Let me share my screen, and I will first call on Rodney Fong. Mr. Fong? Oh, yeah, the hand is no longer raised.
Chair, yeah, thank you. I'll give it a minute, just in case, not a minute, few seconds, in case someone else has their hand raised or want to raise. Okay, say none. Thank you very much. We will now consider setting the agenda. We will open, we'll now open public comment. Ms. Montez, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Chairman. We did not receive any written public comment, but I do have one hand raised from the public. So I will first call on Mr. Mark Scholl. One second.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Scholl, please accept this request. I mean, your microphone and begin speaking. Mr. Scholl?
Yeah, I just got the unmute. I presume this is about the night hush. And I'd like to make a comment or two. First, hopefully, night hush will provide some respite for those under the stick and the candle departures. Second, one of the main frustrations with the night hush is that it is only possible during the middle of the night. This is largely because the FAA has only rudimentary tools to coordinate departures out of SFO in Oakland together. This results in an inefficient use of airspace, particularly over the bay. This is a long-term issue and really needs to be addressed. I've spoken about it several times at the NAC. The runways at SFO in Oakland are so close, their operations should be much more integrated. This would allow much better use of the bay, and I think it's something the Roundtable should push for. Third, another limitation to using the night hush is the recently implemented Sunny One departure out of Oakland is another example why precise management procedures over the bay between the two airports is needed. The Sunny is a nighttime departure out of Oakland where planes make a sharp left turn and fly south down the bay. As the FAA notes, the Sunny reduces night hush opportunities because the two procedures cannot be used at the same time, which is exacerbated by the lack of integration between the airports, and it gets worse. Over-the-bay airspace is a scarce commodity, yet the Sunny has no precise track down the bay. This lack of precise track prevents two-way use of the bay, which forces middle-of-the-night arrivals onto the peninsula rather than over the bay as they used to. Moreover, the Sunny departure requires that planes fly over the bay at an altitude below 5,000 feet for five minutes before they are given a higher altitude. This is why you hear about low-altitude departure noise from places as far away as Sunnyvale. I could go on, but my main point is that night hush illustrates a core problem that needs attention, and that is the need for better integration between the adjacent SFO and Oakland operations and improved precision in how the bay is used. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scholl. I will now call, I have two more hands raised. I will now call on Rodney Fong.
Great, thank you very much. My name is Rodney Fong, President and CEO of the San Francisco Chamber of Commerce. And I'm reaching out to you just to give an update of something that I'm sure you know about, and that is the economic collapse of San Francisco to its small business sector and its tourism sector due to COVID. This has been a horrible situation for most small businesses. We track 50% of the small businesses had closed or remain closed at this time in San Francisco. One-third of our economy is driven by tourism in San Francisco, and so it comes, the night hush, well, an understandable noble effort at the worst possible time. And so I'm going to ask this group to consider that it delay this idea, this thought, until the economy comes back, until tourism comes back. Twenty million visitors come to San Francisco annually on the most uncountable number of business travel, whether that's a large convention or small business meetings and selling their goods and sharing ideas. And so we need to have San Francisco come back. It's not just a San Francisco problem. This is a Bay Area problem, and I'm delighted to see so many cities on this call because we need to begin to work even closer together as an entire Bay Area. So again, ask you to consider to delay this until the economy comes fully back.
Thank you, Mr. Fong. I will now call on Papia Gambaline, followed by Cassandra Costello.
Thank you, Chair and Honorable Members and Staff, for the opportunity to speak to you, and thank you for your service. My name is Papia Gambaline, and I'm Managing Director of Government Affairs for United Airlines. United and other airlines mitigate noise in a number of ways. We have invested in new, quiet, and fuel-efficient aircraft. We worked with Airbus and other manufacturers to install vortex generators for our fleet to reduce sound at slower speeds. Currently, 102 of the 179 planned Airbus retrofits have been accomplished, as an example. Beyond aircraft investment, our pilots undergo extensive training and continual recertification in accordance with FAA regulations and United's policies and procedures to reduce noise. We pay particular attention to the appropriate altitude and thrust reduction to ensure that United meets noise criteria at SFO. Departures of United flights are planned with the lowest possible thrust that can be safely used and United meets or exceeds all noise requirements that SFO requires. We also have a practice the FAA implemented, the Gobs procedure, between these hours that are being discussed, and it has significant environmental implications for us as well, which we also would like some time to explore with you. There are a number of issues and unintended impacts of this proposal. We ask that you consider delaying this decision as we recover from the pandemic and review the implications of this proposal with you in the near future. Thank you for your time and your leadership.
Thank you. I will now call on Cassandra Costello.
Hello, good evening, Chairman Hindi and honorable Roundtable members. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Cassandra Costello, and I'm Executive Vice President at San Francisco Travel Association. We are a nonprofit organization that markets San Francisco and the region globally for leisure and business travel. And I'm calling today to ask for additional time to discuss and review the extended hours to the current night hush program at SFO. As Rodney commented earlier, we are crawling our way out of this global pandemic that's hurt San Francisco harder than any other major U.S. city. San Francisco is well behind other cities in our recovery efforts, and one of those main reasons is due to our reliance on our international visitors. And we continue to find ways to attract visitors in San Francisco to surrounding regions. We need to ensure that we're not putting in policy measures that detract from our ability to successfully recover. And that successful recovery at SFO means that every region benefits. Extending night hush hours even by a small portion has a potential of putting us at a competitive disadvantage and will impact our major markets such as China and Australia. Further restricting and delaying impacts the ability of SFO to attract those long-haul flights and remain a world-class airport. So I respectfully ask that you please consider delaying any decision today to allow for additional time for a thoughtful conversation about this important issue. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I will now call on Liz Lopez, and I do have another hand raised from Jennifer. Liz?
Yes, hi, this is Liz Lopez. I live in San Francisco where the stick flights come low and loud at night, and it's my understanding that this procedure has been on the table for five years. So we've had plenty of time for discussions, I think, and the community has waited long enough for some relief. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I will now call on Jennifer.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
There were some concerns that Kathleen Wentworth had mentioned during a meeting back, I believe it was in May of 2021, regarding the fact that it's very unclear, basically, where the flight tracks will end up after Gobs. She was mentioning things like the fact that the climb could make the planes very, very loud, even at 13,000 feet, because they would be going quickly and climbing at the same time. And there was no real analysis done to answer those concerns, and I have same concerns as her. The other thing that I did want to mention is that the FAA is mentioning waypoints that will be the waypoints that these flights will fly toward. But if you change where the flight path begins, for example, if the flights begin at Gobs rather than, say, Port or somewhere like that, your A to B, your A point changed, so you've got a lateral shift in some cases, or potentially in some cases, even if you're flying to B, which is a different waypoint, that would be a potential shifting in noise. I think there needs to be a little bit further analysis on where these flights will actually be after Gobs. And it's clear, too, from the FAA that Gobs is something called a fly-by waypoint, which means the planes could and will turn prior to Gobs. It's just simple training for the FAA that will prevent that, but it's not clear where they're going to turn. It's going to be one mile, two miles, three miles before Gobs. Very unclear, very unclear where these plates will turn up and be. Thank you.
And Chairman, I do not see any more hands raised for the public, but I do see a hand raised from Mr. Brian Perkins.
Hey, very good, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate it. On behalf of Congresswoman Spear, we want to urge the Roundtable to go ahead and approve this procedure change and/or the request for it and to start the FAA going in this direction. It has been a number of years. A reference was made to my predecessor in this job, Kathleen Wentworth. She's thoroughly satisfied with it, but more importantly, I guess, is the Congresswoman believes that its time has come. And so we respectfully request that this frankly rather modest accommodation to reality be made so that we can all get going and study it and so that we can all take advantage of our current situation in flights. And with respect to Gobs, I think I would have to defer to somebody, but I believe the agreement was that the flights would go beyond Gobs, and then the turn would be made. So there's not going to be a chance of it turning before, and if it is, it's not part of the agreement. It's actually a violation. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins, for sharing your thoughts, and thank you to members of the public for sharing their thoughts with us this evening. Are there any comments from the public? I don't see any. See none. I would now entertain a motion to set the agenda.
Chairman, I do see Member Schneider and Chair Ortiz, I'm sorry, Member.
I like that, Chair Ortiz.
Their heads raised.
On the agenda, on setting the agenda? Okay, let me.
Motion to accept.
Got it. Awesome. Thank you. And then, Mr. Ortiz, second by, okay, motion by those G. Ray, right?
Correct.
And then second by Redwood City. Thank you. Ms. Stockdale, roll call, please.
Airport Commission? I'm here, too.
Yeah, I.
Thank you. Sematelo County Board of Supervisors?
I.
Hafnum?
I.
City of Brisbane?
I.
City of Burlingame?
Yes.
Town of Colma?
I.
Daly City? I. City of Foster City?
Yes.
City of Hafnum Bay?
That wasn't Millbrae, was it? I couldn't hear.
Hafnum Bay.
Oh, sorry.
Hafnum Bay, yes.
Thank you. Town of Hillsborough?
Yes.
And Low Park?
Yes.
City of Millbrae?
Yes.
City of Pacifico?
Yes.
Town of Portola Valley?
Yes.
City of Redwood City?
Yes.
City of San Bruno?
Yes.
City of Woodside?
Yes.
In motion passes.
Thank you so much. Moving on, we get a bit of a move on to.
Excuse me, this is Safi, Supervisor Safi. I want to make sure I wasn't counted, and I want to be counted for the vote.
Oh, sorry about that. City and County of San Francisco Board of Supervisors?
I. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Absolutely. All right, moving on to our special agenda item number one, which is to move to support the FAA's implementation of the proposed change to the night hush departure procedure, option one, and commencement of work on option two to extend the hours of the procedure. As you remember from our regular meeting on February 2nd, we set up this special meeting to officially take action to support the FAA's implementation of the proposed change to the night hush departure procedure between the hours of 1:00 AM to 5:00 AM, which was option one in the FAA's presentation, and commencement of work on option two, which would extend the hours of the procedure to 12:30 AM and to 5:45 AM. Do any members have any questions or comment? I'm going to open the floor for discussions or questions. I see raised hand from Ms. Schneider.
Thank you, Chair, and I want to thank all the new voices from San Francisco. I am from Millbrae. I agree with Brian Perkins, but I do wonder how the merchants in San Francisco think this will hurt them, because it's my understanding that it should make Excelsior and the neighborhoods that abut Daly City much, much quieter, so it should, it should help everybody in that case. We are talking about in the middle of the night here. So if maybe staff could explain and help the people from San Francisco understand how this is actually hopefully better for them.
I see Jean probably and then Mr. Sotero would like to speak on this item. Let me go to Mr. Reindell first.
Why don't we go to Mr. Sotero first? I think he'll probably say what I was going to say. We'll see.
Okay, we'll do that. Mr. Sotero, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. I believe the speakers were mainly concerned in talking about the extended hours. I believe we have consensus and buy-in for the base hours. So I believe their comments were related to the option two. And would welcome their comments if that's not the case, but that is not my understanding.
Okay, all right, let me go to Supervisor Safi. Safi, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
That's okay, Safi. Yeah, so, yeah, listen, as somebody lives in the southern part of the city and Ivar, our airport director, will tell you that he's heard a lot from me over the years. I can tell you that once they changed the number of these flight patterns in the last few years, a significant amount of our neighbors that have lived there, probably some of the longest time in San Francisco, are, have been the most impacted. And so I'm in favor of option two. Despite some of the concern, I can't imagine how 30 minutes would crush our tourism, crush our economy. I think there's ways that they can work around it. And by the way, it's about flight patterns. It's not saying flights have to stop. It just says flights have to be consistent in being respectful in the patterns that they take. I've done a lot of work with Congresswoman Spear. She has been one of the loudest voice in advocating for this, and I fully support her proposal and want to speak on behalf of the voices of my district in the southern part of San Francisco as well. So option two is a proposal I'm fully in support of.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Safi. Next, Member Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to reiterate what Council or Member Schneider said. I'm still not clear on how this would impact the tourism industry, even with the extended hours. Are we saying that we would discourage airlines from flying to SFO if we extended the hours? And that would hurt the tourism industry? Is that what the argument is? I'm kind of missing, and I'm sorry.
Chairman, this Jean, I can start to address that, I think.
Yes, please, please, Mr. Reindell, go ahead.
Yeah, and we also do have members of United. They're just like, I'll turn on my video. We do have members or guests here from United, so if I get this wrong, if one of them would raise their hand, we could go to them as well, but I think the economic piece of this has to do with the extended flight miles and flight time of having to go around the peninsula and rather than through the peninsula for these flights at night. And so I just think they want, what they're asking for is to take another financial look at this. So that is, I think, and again, I don't want to speak for United, but I think that might be some of the economic issues that were being raised.
Okay, and let me just add a couple of comments on this notion. I think for those who are asking for delay on option two, option two is going to take some time if it is even feasible to be implemented. At this point, really, what's going to get into motion, if we vote yes on option one and commencement of option two, would be to start option one probably about 90 days from the date that the FAA receives our letter. And then for option two, that is, if I'm understanding correctly from Director Sotero, that's where the concern is. That's going to be more than a year ago, more than a year from now, I guess. So there will be time definitely for the recovery. And the bottom line, to be frank with all of you, is we have to balance, balance economics and balance the quality of life and the ability of our residents to sleep. So while we are cognizant of the financial and economic impact on the airline industry, at the same time, if people are deprived of sleep, that is a serious issue. It's a health matter that we really need to take that into consideration. That is not to dismiss your concerns, and but we have to balance it. And I think we, hopefully, when the time comes to option two, we would be able to strike a balance between the economics and what our residents deserve and should be receiving, which is simply quiet night of sleep. So I don't see any further hands up, Ms. Montez. Am I missing anybody? Any members of the Roundtable would like to speak?
That is correct, Chairman. I do not see any virtual hands.
Okay, with that, then I'm going to go ahead, open it to the public on comments on item one only at this point. This is the item we are discussing. Ms. Montez?
Thank you, Chairman. As a reminder, if you are calling by phone, you may press star nine or click on the raised hand feature, but I do not have any hands raised from members of the public. But I do would like to acknowledge that we did receive a comment from Mr. Peter Grace from Brisbane. That comment was circulated to the membership and posted to our website.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Montez. Now I would like to close.
Excuse me, Chairman, we did have one last-minute hand go up. It was from Papia Gambal, but now I see Jennifer from Sunnyvale, so give me one second, and I will call on Jennifer.
Hi, regarding whether it should just be one to five, I would suggest that it is one to 5:00 AM initially so that we can see where those flight tracks end up. Again, this is something that is very concerning for the South Bay cities because we do not know where, excuse me, where those flights will be from Gobs. And after that, they'll go to certain waypoints. We understand that. But if there are lateral shifts, then they move to new neighborhoods. So I strongly suggest we do a test on one to 5:00 AM, see where those flights are going, see the percentages. The studies have not been done. We are very unclear where these flight paths will ultimately end up. And so I would strongly suggest we do kind of a model, one to five, and not do the shoulder hours where there could be more flights, because I will tell you, even at higher altitudes in the middle of the night, when windows are open, you can hear those flights. So if you are shifting noise, then that would be against what this Roundtable, the SFO Roundtable, stands for. You don't want to be shifting noise between communities, and it is very unclear where these flights will end up, and they will be climbing. and they will be climbing. Now, it might be better, it might not be, but again, this is, this is a test, right? And as Mark Shaw had mentioned one time previously, God, this night hush has been in place for a long time. It was put into place at one point and failed because the flights were turning early. Now, the FAA does say this is a fly-by waypoint Gobs. I don't know that they guarantee it's going to fly to Gobs. The procedure basically does not say that it's a fly-to waypoint. It's a fly-by waypoint, meaning they turn before the waypoint. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, with that, I do not have any more hands raised from the public.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Montez. With that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comments for item one. Do we have member willing to make a motion to approve to support FAA's implementation of the proposed change to night hush departure procedure, option one, and commencement of work on option two to extend the hours of the procedure?
Mr. Chair, I would be really, really honored and happy to do that. We've been working really hard on this. We've had many, many public meetings. I think it time has come, and I appreciate Brian Perkins from Congresswoman Jackie Spears' office coming in support. So glad to make the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a motion from Mr. Ortiz. Do I have a second?
I can.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a second from Daly City, Mr. Giovanni. So motion by Member Ortiz, seconded by Member Giovanni. Thank you both. Ms. Stockdale, roll call, please. Let me, before, before roll call, any other comments or questions, any discussions, actually, comments or discussions? Okay, say none. Ms. Stockdale, please get the call, call the roll call.
Okay. City and County of San Francisco Board of Supervisors.
I.
Thank you. City and County of San Francisco Airport Commission?
I.
Thank you. Amatello County Board of Supervisors?
I.
City of Colma?
I.
City of Brisbane?
I. I'm sorry, who did you, I did not hear who you called.
You.
I.
County of Colma?
I.
City of Daly City?
Hi.
Thank you. City of Foster City?
Yes.
City of Fumbe? Where are we? It might be muted. Minvala? My drop down. No response. County of Hillsborough?
Yes.
City of Low Park?
Yes.
City of Millbrae?
Yes.
City of Pacifico?
Yes.
County of Portola Valley?
Yes.
City of Redwood City?
Yes.
Thank you. City of San Bruno?
Yes.
Thank you. County of Woodsden?
Yes.
Thank you. Your motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Before I move on to the next item, let me take a moment and thank so many people that have been working so hard to get this to the point that we are here tonight. Obviously, our staff, the FAA had worked hard with our round table, with staff, with the airport, SFO Airport, with their cooperation and working with us. Definitely, Member Ortiz, over the last couple of years, this has been on the top list of the agenda. I know it took a lot of hours and a lot of work and perseverance, right? So I'm glad that you have seen this through. I wish you had seen this through while you were chair last year, but still, your hard work really was instrumental in doing this, so in getting this is done. So thank you. And of course, last but not least, Ms. Wentworth and Congresswoman Spears' office and everybody who was involved, and our phenomenal staff that has really worked so hard, HMMH, for their consulting and for their advice throughout this process. With that, I'm going to go ahead and move to item two, which is a German. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today. I really appreciate you making the time on this special meeting this evening to move this very important motion forward. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.